Well, 6:32, I don't see Pat yet, but we might as well get started. 6:32, I'd like to call this meeting to order, Seadrill Willie Planning Commission, June 17, 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Huggins. Not here. Commissioner Devoines. Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatisi.
Present.
Commissioner Jasper. Commissioner Fernet, here. Commissioner Sexton.
Present.
Okay, have we all had the chance to read the minutes? Is this a typo or is this true? May 6th. I don't recognize that number. Is that, should it be June 10th? Is that, is that correct? Okay, because, because the minutes say May 6th also. So, okay, May 6th. Okay. So, do we have any comments for our minutes on May 6th? For a special meeting? No worries. I forgot water. We don't have water around here, do we? Do we? I'd love one, thank you. I usually have one, I forgot it. Commissioner Devoines, did you?
Um, there's, I know on page five, it says, staff will workshop ideas.
Oh, thank you very much, appreciate that.
I didn't hear workshop was a verb. Staff will workshop ideas. Page five.
Page five.
Maybe I'm wrong, I just didn't hear workshop was a verb. Maybe I'm wrong. Page five. Staff will workshop ideas.
Workshop?
Last sentence of that first paragraph of page five.
I actually didn't hear workshop was a verb.
We could say workshop, I guess.
That was my only comment.
I would say discuss ideas would be right up there as well. Evaluate. What did, what did we actually say? Right.
When you say workshop, I think you're actually having a workshop, yeah, so.
We could replace workshop with evaluate, does that work?
Yeah, perfect. Okay, anything else other than that one word? Okay, if there's no further comments, then with one correction of staff will not workshop, but evaluate ideas and bring them back. If, with that one change, do you accept the minutes as written?
I make a motion to approve the special meeting of the Planning Commission, May 6, 2025, meeting minutes with the minor modification to that one word.
Hold on a second then.
First by Commissioner Fatisi, second by Commissioner Freiberger, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written with that one change, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, there it goes. You got it. Okay. General public comments at 6:38. Please keep comments to three minutes or less because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email to nmcgowan@seadrillwillie.gov. Attention, public comment until 4:30 PM the day before the meeting. Do we have any comments?
No written comments received.
Okay. General public comments are open and closed. It's, well, closed now at 6:39.
Got a couple people online.
Oh, do we have a hand up? Thank you. Okay, so, that's closed at 6:39. And now we have a public hearing, which we don't have, an unfinished business, PC memo from consultant team. And I believe they're online, or on Zoom.
They are online tonight. This is Tom Glover, Community Development Director. So, tonight, we're going to hear about, uh, excuse me, we're coming back to you with the climate element, with changes shown from the last Planning Commission meeting. And then we also will be seeing the transportation element, second review, and our Public Works Director, Bill Bolick, is here to present that. And then the last item will be reviewing, this is the first review of the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. And what they did was print out the existing and then go through and mark it up. But we welcome your comments on all of these things. So, I will turn this over now to Donna Keeler from Facet, who is online. I think.
Donna, you're coming through very quietly. Could you double check your audio?
Switch to headphones, see if that works. Hold on a second.
That's much better.
Much better.
Oh, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But not now.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if you heard, I was wondering if you could switch over to the other presentation. Yeah, that one. Perfect. So, Heidi Ruse is with me. She is going to kick this off with her first two or three slides, and then I will take over from there. We're not going to go over all the slides that we went over last time, we just want to kind of do a recap of some of the changes that we've made since the last time we met. I also wanted to apologize, Alex Plum had another public meeting tonight, so I'm going to fill in for her as best as I can. Heidi?
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next slide, please. So, just wanted to remind everybody that the Commerce, Commerce has provided some guidance on the GHG reduction requirements, you know, understanding that this is hard and this is the first time that you all are facing these daunting obligations. So, just wanted to, you know, remind everybody that, it is a direct quote out of guidance, that notably meeting your obligation to reduce GHG emissions will require implementation of tangible actions. A set of policies limited to steady or consideration will not reduce GHG emissions. So, we just wanted to remind everybody that we really did try to be responsive to the requirements, but also realize the limitations over the influence that you might all have to reduce, you know, citywide emissions that are really indirect emissions and not directly accountable to city operations.
Heidi, this is Tom. Could you, could you pull the microphone back from your face just a little bit? We're getting some distortion.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
I'm so sorry, okay. I don't think I need to repeat that, but thank you. Next slide, please, on the implementation plan. So, we have prepared an implementation plan to help guide city staff as to, you know, how to implement the new proposed goals and policies. This implementation plan, as it sits today, though, does not include the newly proposed goals and policies that incorporate the feedback from the previous meeting. We were all just together fairly recently, so that's still coming. But pursuant to Commerce guidance, the city must develop goals, policies, and an implementation plan to achieve the per-capita VMT target and the additional GHG reduction targets from the other sectors. However, the city could consider incorporating the implementation plan into the plan, but that is not required. But the Commerce, oh, go ahead, is there a question? Nope, I think I'm hearing my own feedback, I apologize again. Commerce recommends that your jurisdiction updated emissions inventory every five years to evaluate progress toward these GHG reduction goals. Remember, we set some for 2030, 2040, and 2050, but on those interim years, they do recommend updating your GHG inventory to check progress. I think on the next slide, I hand it back over to Tom.
Thank you, Heidi. So, I just wanted to quickly go over some of the revisions that we've made from the last meeting and our meeting with the City Council. We've added the new policy CR 1.5 regarding providing residents within the WEE, WEE, information regarding fire prevention. And WEE stands for Wildlands Urban Interface. And then we also have a new policy to highlight and promote the efforts of helping hands Food Bank to enhance local food security through its community pantry. We revised a couple policies to include coordination with Washington DNR and to improve clarity. Also did some revisions to provide specific revisions regarding the type of infrastructure and providing examples of alternative modes of transportation. We did further revisions to provide clarity on when acquisition may be needed and highlighted relocation or retrofitting of critical facilities. We revised policy 13.2 to include recycling to the extent possible and revised policy 15.2 to promote a resilient local economy by identifying opportunities for diversification and supporting businesses and adapting to climate-related hazards. Next slide, please. And for the GHG greenhouse gas emissions reduction some element, there's a new policy to coordinate with the city's fire department staff and building official to identify and reduce barriers to encouraging electric vehicle infrastructure, recognizing that not all vehicles will be able to be electrified. Also, new policy to prioritize permitting for transit-oriented development proposals, and a new policy to coordinate with local, the local job corps to create and sustain a business technical assistance program to increase recycling and reduce waste. Also, one to increase education for composting programs to divert community organic waste from entering the landfills, and another one to identify opportunities to enhance and preserve urban tree canopy to maintain or increase their carbon concentrations and wood conversion of carbon-rich ecosystems. And next, I think that's it. I think that was it. The rest of the slides cover all the slides, the goals and policies that you saw last time that are in the draft element. So, I just wanted to go over these changes with you and see if you have any questions. I'll do my best to answer one for Alex. If not, if I can answer a question, I'll take it down and get back to you with responses. And Heidi, of course, will be able to also help. Are there any questions?
So, I didn't catch this last time, but CR 1.4 on page 16 of the combined packet, it says encourage and work with organizations to incentivize green building certification to improve energy and environmental performance. Is that supposed to say energy efficiency?
Oh, yeah, you're, good catch. I think that's probably what the intent was. I'll take, I'll ask Alex about that. Heidi, any thoughts on that?
Energy performance, I think, is also an acceptable term, rather than energy efficiency. I think it means the same thing, but it really does mean to either limit energy, limit energy waste, switch energy. So, I think either works.
Oh, I see, so it's connected.
But it does look like there's a word missing, yeah, for sure.
All right, we'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, are you taking questions now on all the goals relating to this, or are we going to step through them, one, two, three, four, in sequence?
I think the-
Yeah, we can take questions on all the goals.
Okay, so where are you at in your presentation? Are you still continuing, or is this question time?
This is question time. We're not going to go through all of them again. We just wanted to kind of focus on the ones that you had questions on, and, because then we also, after this, we've got the economic development element to, to discuss.
Okay, so, I'll continue on what I've continued on in multiple conversations we've had. Emergency management, when I'm looking through CR 4, it is just lacking specifics, okay? It's, it's very, very general, and I don't believe if we accept that climate change and global warming is a fact, which I do, as well as sea level rise, our biggest issue in Skagit County is the Skagit River, okay? So, there was a study done, it's called the Skagit River Basin Climate Science Report, done in 2011. That is pure science of over 200-plus pages, everything from dealing with the glaciers to the river to water flows and what the impact will be with sea level rise, as well as what, what possible things can happen to the river. So, there's nothing in this emergency management goal, okay, that deals with evacuation routes, okay? I know for a fact that we have a 500-year flood plane that basically starts from state down to the river. If we accept the fact that water levels are rising and the tide comes all the way up to Mount Vernon, we need to have something in here that has a little bit more details. We need to go uphill, right? So, I'm just going to point out the obvious. We have DNR on township uphill, we got the fire station up there. We need to have language in here that if there is an evacuation that is necessary, there's a lot of private land up there as well, that we could talk to the private landowners where you can set up, just staging areas for people to go. I don't even care if it's a simple sign that has a finger saying, "Go this way to safety," but we need to have something in here that addresses a little bit more, because this is so general. I mean, when I looked at CR 4.5, and listen, I do appreciate the effort that's going in here, but this is something that public safety, fully knowing that that river at some point, if this is going to happen, and I believe it will, okay, we need to prepare for it.
So, if I could just jump in real quick, please?
Go ahead.
So, the city's comprehensive emergency management plan does address those details that you're talking about. And what this goal is calling for is that we ensure that we align our efforts with it. And so, all of those details about evacuation routes and higher ground, everything is all in that plan. So, to go into detail, that detail here in this plan would not be appropriate. That's why we have referenced the emergency management plan there as a valid document that we need to adhere with.
But should we include language that shall include? Okay, it just says that there's a document there, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be necessary. It was not something the Planning Commission would see. It's not a land use policy document. This just simply calls out that the, our land use planning efforts will align with the comprehensive emergency management plan as necessary.
I did kind of have a question down on CR 13.
Thomas, I think you can go down to these, each one of these goals, they're in there, I just don't have control, but.
It's on page 21 of the document.
Thank, there we go.
Yeah, so, and this may be getting too specific, and I did notice when I, I got down to the greenhouse gas section that it kind of covered that you guys did address recycling and composting down there, but I was wondering if possibly a third policy here, something to the effect of work with schools and community organizations to bring attention to recycling or encourage recycling, or if staff feels like that might be redundant?
Yeah, we can definitely add it, and we can, Tom?
Yeah, I don't think that'd be redundant. I think that's a good idea.
Just kind of because it addresses the community aspect.
Could you say that part again, so I get the notes right?
So, what I had was work with schools and community, maybe other community organizations to bring, to encourage recycling, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna, I, are you?
I have a couple more.
You still going?
Yeah, but I don't want to.
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so, down on page, the next page, 23, under greenhouse gas emissions, paragraph two, I just wondered if this was a typo or if I was reading it wrong. It said, basically, the second sentence there, "Transportation activities in the city generate roughly 115,360 million annual miles traveled." For some reason, that's not making sense to me, how that.
I might need to have Heidi answer that one.
Yeah, hello. Let me double check, hold on really quickly. I mean, just to order of magnitude, somewhere we have a slide, actually, that says it. In our previous presentation, we actually covered that. So, why don't we come back to that, if you don't mind? It'll take me a couple of minutes to find that, and I will double check that number for you.
All right, and then GHG, let's see here, let me find it, on page 25. Nine, yes, okay. So, for some reason, all of the above goals are laid out as goal GHG eight, seven, so on, but this one, for some reason, is reversed, and it says GHG goal nine. So, it's just kind of a comment. And then in that new 9.3. Avoid conversion. I just wondered, what, what does that mean, conversion of carbon-rich ecosystems to what? Are we talking about?
I'm, I'm sorry, I had a, a plane was flying over. What was it, which one was that you're talking about?
Okay, GHG 9.3.
Uh huh.
So, it says avoid conversion of carbon-rich ecosystems. It feels kind of incomplete, but what, I guess, trying to figure out what that means, conversion to what?
So, Heidi, I don't know, Heidi might be better to respond to this, but it's avoid, avoiding the elimination of trees that provide carbon, what's the word I'm looking for, Heidi?
Yeah, so, avoid conversion of carbon-rich ecosystems, meaning conversion of, really the loss of carbon-rich ecosystems. It's really the conversion of carbon-rich ecosystems to ones that are carbon poor or carbon sources instead of sinks. And so, I think that is what this is trying to do. So, I think we could, we could identify opportunities to enhance and preserve existing urban tree canopy to maintain or increase their carbon concentrations. I think we're okay with that. And avoid, identify opportunities to avoid, I think that's where it's the and, is, you know, identify- I think that's where it's the and, is, you know, identify opportunities to enhance and to avoid, really, we could say, loss of carbon-rich ecosystems.
I think that clarifies it a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think the word I was looking for was sequestration.
Well, right, yes, yes. I mean, I think we're, I think it's really increasing their carbon sequestration. I think is actually the right word instead of concentration. But I think the avoid conversion and that part of it was really to avoid the loss. It's to avoid converting it to, you know, to development, to other, you know, other states, so.
And that's all I hear.
I think we should make both of those changes, Tom. If we could go back to your question on the VMT. I have actually found the slide, and I have double-checked the math. So I think you had a question on the annual VMT, right? Let's see, where do we have that?
Yeah, that's the second paragraph. It's on page 12 of the document. Which is on page 23 of the combined document. Yeah.
So, yes, so 100, right there, 115.360 million annual miles. So again, we did the survey that comes out to your per capita, if you remember the presentation. Your annual VMT per person is 9,251 miles. So for every man, woman, child, that's how we divide it. There's, it was a population of roughly 12,470. And if you multiply those two together, you will get, you know, on this slide, it was 0.115 billion, but it's 115,359,970 to be exact.
So that's 115 million, not 115,360 million. There's a comma in there. It's supposed to be a period.
Right. That's supposed to be a period, I believe, yes.
All right, thank you.
I think that, thank you, thank you. Now I see the error. Sure, that should be a period.
Are there any other questions? Oh, yeah, we do have one more. Yes, Patty?
I had a question in CR6.3. When saying DNR and other resources, other agencies, we coordinate with DNR and other agencies to produce lost private land through forest stewardship, education, and identify opportunities to stand incentives for forest landowners. My question was, who is educating their forest landowners? Are the agencies educating the city? The city is educating the landowners? Or is it directly between the agency and the landowner? Does that make sense?
It does. I'm sorry, but which number was that again? CR?
CR6.3.
Oh, 6.3. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong one.
I'm just trying, I just tell you the role of the city is. Is the city gaining information? Is the city gaining information from the agencies? And relating that the landowners? Or is it a direct relationship between the agency and the landowner?
Yeah, I see what you mean. So Donna, that's CR6.3. It's on page seven of the document, page 18 of the combined document.
Yeah, yeah, just, thank you.
Yeah.
I, the, I think the intent was, when Alexander wrote this up, was to coordinate with Department of DNR to obtain resources to work with landowners, whether it's a technical advice or other materials that can be shared with property owners.
So maybe at least, so an example might be if we had a packet of information that we handed out to people seeking a building permit for a new home or something, that could be something we could pass on to them. We talked in the past about being a clearinghouse of information.
Right.
Does that, so maybe we can work with Alex to clarify that sentence.
Okay, yeah, I'll pass this on to her. In fact, she just ended her other meeting and is going to try to join, so she might be on in a few minutes.
Okay.
But I'll pass this on to her.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I might have one question. On greenhouse gas dash one, encourage the building, encourage buildings that use renewable energy, okay? Are we encouraging renewable energy or just buildings that? I mean, does it say in here we're encouraging renewable energy in the area?
I see what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that 1.1 probably clarifies that a bit, but if there's a...
1?
Yeah, where it says support programs, we certainly would support them. We can encourage energy efficiency in design. We do that through our building code, which requires that we do that. But maybe we can tweak goal GHG dash one a little bit.
Yeah, I, I can offer just a little. I think, I think we are trying to say exactly, encourage the use of these things in buildings versus encouraging the renewable energy industry from locating in your town, for example. So I think that, that was the intent, was that it was encourage the use of these things specific to energy consumption in buildings.
That works.
Or by buildings.
Okay, so we're not encouraging renewable energy companies to open camp here, right?
Right, you're not, exactly, exactly. You're encouraging the use of these things in buildings.
Got it, okay.
And so I, I guess we really don't need the word buildings. It's just encourage the use of renewable energy conservation measures. I think it probably needs a noun. And efficient technologies and practices to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from building energy use. We could move back to the end there and not help to clarify.
That's good.
So, one step further on that topic. Would we encourage the use of wood stoves, or would we encourage the use of natural gas?
I think we would avoid that conversation.
Just trying to clarify that.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, we're trying to be fuel-neutral because there are ways in which to use wood, for example, you know, as a fuel that is, that helps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. If you think of it as a waste product, right? Pellet stoves, you know, that sort of thing. And so I do think, as Tom, that we're trying to be fuel-neutral and not really pick winners and losers because there are different applications that are appropriate for, you know, most fuels.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
To tag on to that, I, looking at that goal again, encourage either maybe say development or construction that uses renewable energy? Because I think that's what that's going for. I know it kind of explains it in the policies. But I think that's what was intended, and I think if you take buildings out entirely, it's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, so I think, let me repeat my proposal because we do talk about new and existing buildings. So I think we want to say, encourage the use of renewable energy, comma, conservation measures, comma, or strategies, comma, and efficient technologies and practices to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings. Does that work?
I do have a little bit of concern with that one, just thinking back to our land use element and the prohibition that we put on putting the battery storage facilities in here. You know, that sort of thing. I could see where someone could read that and think that's a contradiction of that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thomas, Alex is on. She just, would you be able to make her a panelist, Alex Plum?
I, I mean, I, I could absolutely see where someone could be confused by that. But again, I, I, you know, I do believe you all, that this, this goal does not, does not prohibit you from having restrictions on certain fuels and certain uses. And, you know, in particular, in, you know, talking about battery storage. It is encouraging not allow all, so I think there's still some, you know, room for nuance, shall we say, in how, again, how code and ordinance is written to support other things such as safety, right?
So I would, I would hesitate to include the words "from buildings" at the end of that sentence. And I say that because I look at the goal 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3, and we do specify buildings there. So our statement, our goal, is broad enough that we can, I think it's broad as it should be, and then we jump into more specifics in the, in the action items below. Does that make sense?
So if it just read, encourage the use of renewable energy conservation measures and efficient technologies and practices to reduce greenhouse gas emissions? Does that sound better?
Mm-hmm. It's a little more clear.
Yeah. Startled me for a second there. Didn't realize it was Alex. I was looking for who was talking.
Yeah, sorry. I got done with one meeting, and I was like, I should come with support.
Oh, thank you. That's good. Thanks. Do we have any more questions?
Too many to ask.
Now's your chance.
Anyone? Commissioner DuVines, you got any? Commissioner Petisi?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Donna. I think we've covered that segment. Unless you have anything further?
No, yeah, thank you.
And Heidi, thank you.
Absolutely glad to be here. All right, if we're moving on, I'm going to drop then. I know Donna's got other business in front of you all, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you. Okay. Then next, we will turn this over to Bill, and he can give us an update on the transportation element and the work that's been done since our last meeting.
I'm going to pass this off real quick. This is, I'll also segue a little bit into our six-year transportation improvement program, which also basically supports the transportation element. So I went through the, the which is live, and there's a table of our six-year TIP, and then the six-year map to go with it.
I like this stuff, by the way. Yeah, he can doodle on it. Make sure you know what's going on.
That bike is currently out of commission.
I feel like Alex Trebek or something. I'm glad we got all that on the recording. Okay, well. No, I'm fine. So this is, not going to talk about the six-year tip first. This is follow-up to our first read of the transportation element from the last time I was before you. This is actually, so the first presentation was about our existing conditions. This is about our forecast. So next slide. This slide is basically a repeat, but, you know, this transportation element, this version of the comprehensive plan is a major update from the last one. And we, and the goals of this are aligned with the city, county, SCOG, and state goals of the transportation plans, so all these things regionally connect with each other. And also, we've updated the facilities inventory, AKA our transportation system, what the traffic counts are, that type of thing, what the forecasts are. And then we also did a safety analysis. This also includes a brief on the financial plan that shows that our list of 20-year projects, including our six-year TIP, we have a way to pay for those. And mostly, from the city funds we have, pay for grant matches. So a lot of our program of building new transportation infrastructure depends on grants heavily. Next slide. So like before, this is our transportation network we have, our collector and arterial system. And if you remember, the thickness of the lines is an indication of the amount of traffic relative to everything else being held. And so this diagram shows the Jones-Johnliner Railroad undercrossing as a connected corridor. So that's the result, and this is a two-part slide that has a different graphic. But this basically shows how that Johnliner corridor balances some of the SR20 highway system. And then, of course, going south or westerly, if you will, is where most of the traffic's going to I-5, so that's where it re-concentrates. Next slide. So this is the model that just shows how John, Jones-Johnliner corridor is going to increase without Highway 20 mixed in there. So the green line there, so basically, you get to Patrick Street, which goes by Les Schwab. And that's going to take most of the freight traffic that will use this, or as residential traffic. And this is kind of a model thing, because the model isn't super smart, okay? So it's directing all of the... So it's directing all of the single occupancy vehicle traffic all the way to Trail Road in that system when the reality is that they will probably share that, go down, some of them will go down Garden of Eden and others will go down to Trail Road to enter our system. Because Garden of Eden and a little bit easterly, kind of backtracking on FNS Grade Road to get to what I'll call the Cook Road roundabouts to act as a system, but it's not really that much of a backtrack. And so I see probably the resulting traffic splitting between those, just as what my judgment is as a traffic engineer. But this gives an idea with ultimate build-out, and that's the other thing to keep in mind, that we may very well not get to where our ultimate prediction is. Because the problem with traffic models and growth models is that we can usually emulate with an equation the past ups and downs of growth, but we always go linear when we predict. And that's not how growth happens. So this, you can consider this the worst-case scenario. But if you notice, it's all green, which is, indicates level of service C or below. So the way this corridor will be designed will handle the expected traffic load. Next slide.
Bill, just a quick-
Sorry, yep. I was going to say, do you have any questions about this slide? So thank you.
So is the goal to get the industrial traffic off of nine onto Jones John Liner, circumvent that whole section and then pop out?
Not necessarily. No, that's not. But the reality is in the middle, where Patrick Street is and Lesch Schwab, we actually have industrial-zoned area in that area.
Right, no, 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 yeah.
We actually have to, just to the west of Patrick Street, we, I don't really know what the business is, but it is a truck hauling business.
Right, right, right there on.
Okay, and the, and that's part of my comment is that you'll end up with, and this is also a big fire life safety benefit to the city as well. Because if you think about fire trucks from Station 2 don't have to go to Highway 20 and back up. But the idea is, is that industrial area would go to Patrick Street and out as a shorter, more maneuverable route, okay? I don't necess, you, you could get traffic to bypass this Highway 20 because you have an accident there or you have a lot of congestion there. But most trucks are going to stay on Highway 20 because you just have better turning movements, okay?
So what, Patrick just dead-ends right now?
Right now it does. We do, it's on the six-year TIP I just gave you as well. It's been part of this overall plan to basically connect that through as a freight-capable route. And it comes right into the roundabout that's freight-capable as well, which is all part of that. Yes, sir?
So Patrick Street makes perfect sense. But when you travel west on Jones and you turn left on North Trail? Have you seen that road lately?
Yes, I have.
It's about this narrow and it's covered with trucks that are parked in a no parking zone and garbage cans everywhere. You can't get two cars passed.
If, if that becomes an arterial route and it's not a connected route yet, and it probably won't be for several years. Because part of what I do, and I'll talk about this a little on the six-year and the next slide as well. So Mark Freiberger had, you know, this carries on a lot of his vision, but what he had is, and we have it going for another round as well, tried to get raise grants that would build the whole $20 million corridor at once. We, we tried twice and didn't get it. We have it in with Rick Larson's office for a third time. But what I've done is I've taken the strategy of saying, we're going to say we're not going to get that or if we do, I need a contingency plan. I've taken our six-year TIP and broken these up into phases that we can do on a, on a regular transportation funding pace, okay? Which means that the last two sections of FNS Grade Road, or not FNS Grade, sorry, Jones Road are probably not going to be built for probably 10 years or so. And really, it depends on travel demand. So once we get the undercrossing done, which currently is being designed, work with BNSF, then this becomes a viable corridor, okay? And then that's where probably, it's probably a toss-up between Garden of Eden Road and Patrick Street, depending on whether we get a developer or, because they're actually building half of that road. Which one happens first? Will probably be the first north-south road, not necessarily Trail Road. But it depends on the travel demand. So that's kind of the overall plan. But Trail Road going through that little community, it is built to a width that is an arterial standard with a bike pad path on one side and a thing on the other, but with no parking. And right now, without that traffic pressure, traffic demand, you know, the no parking isn't necessarily enforced. So you're certainly right there, but when it starts to become an arterial, they will have to enforce that at this time. So, good point, but that's the general answer to that question.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, next two slides. No, just next slide. Okay. So our future traffic conditions. This right here basically shows the first part of my six-year tip map. This is the Jones John Liner Corridor. And it shows each one of those little boxes, or the same on the map I gave you, basically shows the project numbers for the phasing of Jones John Liner arterial. So my map's showing more because we're upgrading FNS Grade Road in two phases. But Jones John Liner Road, the green circle is a roundabout we're building this summer. It's going to go under construction in two weeks. And then the other parts of that, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven phases, if you include the corridor, is what it's going to take to fully build out Jones John Liner arterial corridor. The undercrossing's on there and so is the section that's currently under design called the John Liner Arterial Road. This is like a plat that all has everything the same name and I get tongue-tied, so. But that's also under designed by Reichert-Neeby. So the, the section that gets from Highway 9 basically to SAP Road is already under design and should be constructed in the next two to three years. And then the rest of it is what we're going to phase out and build as, build as regional priority allows. And then, of course, we have, so I kind of call this the Northern Cedar Wally Network, traffic network, if you will, because it's both that horizontal corridor, which is what GMA was originally designed to serve, is parallel corridors to the main state routes. And then it's also made up of those routes that allow you to go south to the main arterial corridor. And let's see here. And so part of what this is doing is using this map to demonstrate how we're going to achieve mitigation for the four intersections that are either going to fail predicted or are close to failing. So we're talking Reed Street and SR-20 intersection improvement. We're talking about the Trail Road intersection improvement where, by the bus barn. SR-20 roundabout was one of those failure spots and that's being mitigated by the roundabout we're building this summer. And then I believe Murdoch Street was also one that came up on the radar for, if you remember, the last time.
Just a quick question, that SR-20 Cascade Trail West extension, what are they going to do? Pave from Metcalf? Right now it's all gravel. So I'm looking at the bottom.
Oh, that one, yes. And that's on the six-year as well. One of the things I will do is I also have a set of, a slide deck that also shows each project and the highlights of each one. So it's gravel right now, but it's not ADA compliant.
It's not, no.
No. And so what that 4,000 feet of project expects to do is basically, so Belling, City of Bellingham created a gravel speck, a limestone path. So if you know Cornwall Trail and some of their bike path.
Ah, I do, yeah.
And so they've gotten that through the feds as this particular limestone speck is ADA compatible. As opposed to loose gravel is not typically ADA compatible because wheelchairs have a hard time going through it. The idea with that project is basically to convert that entire 4,000 lineal feet all the way to Metcalf. So we connect that trail that goes all the way to Lyman to Metcalf as an ADA-compatible surface.
Yeah, I'm on that trail all the time.
Yeah.
And we just had the blast of, uh-
The blast of the past.
Right, right. And Matt did it as well and, yeah, that's the only section that, that's not paved.
Yep.
And it's really not that bad, but I'm familiar with the Bellingham surface and it's like a white kind of, uh-
Yeah, and it locks up like concrete.
Yeah.
And, and it will make it easier for our maintenance forces to maintain it and a variety of-
So that's what they're going to do? They're not going to pave it? They're going to put that limestone?
That's my plan.
Okay?
It's also, it has kind of an economic factor to it. So, Liz, your next slide.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On, on this map that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
At one point I thought there was supposed to be a road that went from FNS Grade to Cook.
So, yeah, the road from FNS Grade to Cook is probably Trail Road. And so the Trail Road extension is what's listed on the six-year. So the project numbers on the table I gave you match with the project numbers on the map. That's how you see what that is. And then the project numbers, I've changed them to my style. So the code on the project numbers is the first two numbers is the year in which the project was conceived. So I went all the way back to 2004 six-year tip that Cedar had developed. That was as far back as I can go. So that's why, if you notice, several of these roads have a '04 before them because they were actually conceived over 20 years ago. And then, so 20 projects were conceived in 2020, several of them are 2025. But that's that code and that's just a numerical order there. It just gives a little bit different information when you look at this stuff.
Where's the roundabout on Highway 20 going?
Go back one slide. On Highway 20 or Highway 9? Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you said that there was already a planned construction for Highway 20 Roundabout?
Uh, I must have misspoke. The current roundabout we're, we're building this summer is on Highway 9, John Liner McGaragall. That's that green dot.
Okay.
Over towards me. Uh, that was one of them that was listed as potential failure in the future to a level of service E and that's being mitigated right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, that Trail Road extension project is what, is the piece that will be left after Bucko gets done with their portion. And then that is what links it to FNS Grade Road. And that's the one that links Jones Road through FNS Grade all the way to Cook.
So they're already putting the road in off of Cook through Bucko?
Right. And that serves the Bucko plats they're doing now.
Right.
And then the city has, I don't know if it's an, it's not a local agency agreement. Basically a developer agreement. And what we did is, this is kind of called an overburden agreement where we want somebody, usually a developer, to expand their project to handle a public need. So in Squim, I did, we did this with a water reservoir. How are they needed a 500,000 gallon reservoir to serve the community they were building in Solana, if you know what that is? We required the developer to build a 1.5 million gallon reservoir so we could serve more of the city. And the city paid for that overburden. We're doing a similar thing with Bucko Estates where they had, you know, the initial plan because they weren't going to cross Brickyard Creek and make the connection to FNS Grade on the west side of their development. And so the city made an agreement that, no, we want you to build a bridge and then we also want you to connect to this piece of property that the city owns so that then we can take it from there and extend it to FNS Grade and connect it in. And then we have a, a path to-
I know I'm beating the horse here and we continue to do that. When Mark was the director, we also looked at that as a potential evacuation route.
Sure.
Because we were looking for funding, okay, to expand that. Because that gets us uphill as well as township does.
Sure.
And it's more in the middle of the city. So I just want that still potentially out there.
And part of this whole plan here with these multiple accesses, south to north, north to south accesses this year. We've got Reed Street, Murdoch Street, Patrick Street, Garden of Eden, and Trail Road. So five different accesses north that span the length, oh, and then SR-9 for, for that matter, and then Fruitdale to the east of that. So that's the other piece of this is to add that redundancy for fire life safety. I only know I mentioned that once. But it provides fire life safety access under non-disaster events, east and west, which is way better than, because right now, from a fire station too, they got to go down to Highway 20 all the way to FNS Grade, up Garden of Eden, and then back east. So you can see where this underpass, when it gets done, is going to greatly reduce response times. Yes, sir?
The Hanson Annexation up on the north side?
Yes, sir.
What will be their direct route to and from the city?
If you look on the last project on the six-year tip, I've identified Birch Lane.
Oh, good.
As an arterial.
So they're going to come straight down Birch?
Well, that would be an option. There is another one that goes, I don't know the road name, but you know, the existing plat that is about 1,000 feet west of SAP Road? Kind of goes up. I don't have a city-
That line up with Patrick?
Yeah, sort of lines. It's still to the west of Patrick, but-
Okay.
I think it's Garden of Eden Road.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Nope. So, you know, there's a, so the Hanson Annexation did an annex all the way across. There's that one property owner that owns the property between Hanks Annexation and the last annexation we did, the development below that. There is a path through that that they could go through and hit.
Derry Lane? Does that-
Possibly. I don't know the name of that particular one.
There's that housing development that went in three, four years ago. There's a back door going out that to the north. Would that connect?
Cambridge Street, that's what it is.
Oh, okay, got it. It's, there'd be about three ways out.
It probably, that's multiple ways, but those are the ones that are kind of developed now. But Birch Lane, again, the other part of a six-year tip, if you get a developer ready, is going to utilize a route, you want that in the tip so you can help control what the ultimate cross-section's going to be to serve, the people it's going to serve. Now, at the same time, remember, some of these things in this tip are 20 years old. Some of these in this tip I just gave you will probably also be 15. It's not uncommon because it's not just a six-year transportation, what you can accomplish in six years. There are certain projects you want to be, stay on the radar and be visible. So as your plan goes on, they're there if, if somebody's going to trigger it. Yes, ma'am?
So, am I correct? I, I thought I heard you say that the Trail Road improvements, I think it's Phase 1, that's number 22, which is the FNS to Bucko connection. That's pretty low on the priority list and it's going to be probably quite a ways out for that. But they'll have access to the south.
Yes, they'll have access to the south. Now, the other thing about a six-year tip, if something emerges as an emerging need, we have the ability, or council has the ability, to amend this tip once a month. So if there's either an emerging need or a funding opportunity, if you remember back in 2009 when Obama came out with the ARA program, Americans Rehabilitation and blah, blah, whatever Act, there was a requirement that you had to react within six months because he wanted to put money into the economy right now. Having things on this tip, if I needed to elevate something because I had something that was eligible for funding, I can actually, that, that's what this is for. So if something on the lower end, because you know, the other piece that could pop is, you know, something like, you know, Jones Road Phase 3 or, you know, either one of the phases, or even Patrick Street is number 19. You know, if the developer all of a sudden built the southern half and I had a connection with public-private funds, it would all of a sudden make that more attractive to a grant process. We could elevate that. And I'll talk a little bit more of this, but basically to that blue range, that the blue range is what's on deck next. Think of it that way, okay? So we have that flexibility with this, that if development happens to accelerate itself faster than, this is my best guess, okay? But we have that ability and flexibility to move things really rather quickly to respond to an emerging opportunity or need. Okay. And then, let's see here. Oh, and this is, so on, on, on our comprehensive plan, we have basically the upper portion of this is those projects on my six-year TIP list. And then the lower portion is another list of projects that are, and I would maybe expect, as I get more familiar with the city and more familiar with the regional planning, that we may add projects to this list in a, in a, in a comprehensive plan amendment at a future date. But this basically isn't much of a pool to draw from. So as we complete projects, I usually, in other jurisdictions I've been in, you use that list below as a pool for what to move up next. Because the six-year tip is truly a living document that cycles every year, as opposed to every 10 years like this. But right now, that's our list of additional projects in the city. And part of what I've looked at is I just, like I said, I got to get more familiar with the city and what those needs are. But this is very northerly heavy and I suspect there's other projects in the southern area of the city that probably has some worthiness like Railroad and Jamison, which is a acute intersection. But Mr. Freiber actually did a lot of those projects about 10 years ago too, so. So there, that, that's where we will continue to consider new projects on the list, evaluate them on their merits. And we may add them to this lower section in a, in a comprehensive plan amendment or they may actually make it on- or they may actually make it onto the tip as a pool of projects on how you advance things as you go on. But that's what this represents is basically $57 million, $58 million with the projects total that our comprehensive plan identifies for future development and expansion of the system.
If I wanted to read more about these projects, could I look up the project number on your website?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Soon. And like I said, on the website, we will have kind of a project page for each one of these projects. I just developed them a couple of weeks ago that basically give you a timeline, what the project name is, what the limits are, and what the expected cost is going to be. A picture of a typical view of the project as it exists today. And then also an aerial, a small aerial photo map of just where that project's located in general. And then a set of bullet points of what the merits and what the new road is anticipated to be like. And all that will be on the website. And then, at another time, I'll even have a more detailed set of project pages that even gives you a more detailed estimate and some more narrative about the project and more existing condition stuff. But yeah, as this tip is adopted, because I don't necessarily know if council's going to recommend some changes to it. I want to have something that's consistent for people to see. But yes, it will be all available on the web. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is our revenue forecast. So, basically, kind of in a nutshell, we expect to basically get about $3 million in our local funding and that's between REIT, the TBD, Transportation Benefit District, and traffic impact fees. And also different small portions that we get from the general fund allocated transportation. And a lot of what we use that for, and this is actually the section we allocate for grant funding matches. So, we can force multiply our funds by about five to six times with grant funding, by making matches for grant funding. And so, that's the formula to fund that 20-year plan you just have on the last slide. So, the idea is that this is doable, assuming that the, we do rely on the grant opportunities to come through. And sometimes you get a bonus if you have an appropriate developer mitigated project as well that you participate with.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
On the REIT, that looks really light at 400. Do you just take a percentage?
Well, that's the portion of REIT that we apply to transportation.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yes, sir.
There's no way. That's like nothing.
You're right. But no, this is specific to transportation.
Okay.
And then we use that REIT funding for other programs and parks and things like that.
But that's what I thought. I was like, there's no way.
No, you're very correct. But we get about a quarter million dollars plus or minus every year from our TBD and from our traffic impact.
It depends on real estate transactions.
Which also depends on development, too, very development. This is over an eight-year average. So, meters it out a bit. Okay, next slide. I might be done. Oh, okay, I'm pretty much done. So, our next steps, we have, you know, the transportation element's nearly complete. We need to finalize our goals and policies, most notably the new stuff for, that incorporates active transportation into our concurrency management. And those are basically in their final touch-up stages as we go. We're going to refine our revenue forecast a bit as well. And then, the other piece is our final review is we have a review with SCOG. So, Skagit Council of Governments has a checklist to make sure that our transportation element meets everything on that checklist and they recommend it and move it forward to the Department of Commerce. Yeah, Department of Commerce, sorry. And then that, they're the ones, of course, then give us our final review for compliance for the entire comprehensive plan. And so, I think that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, actually, I do read your weekly report, by the way, and I really appreciate getting all of this because it just makes me aware of when I'm looking at stuff. I know when I'm looking at. Hey, just a question, two of them. First of all, Homestead Park, that's going to be a really nice project. It's right on Northern State. There's a lot of land up there and if we can make that similar to Veterans Section on the bottom there where the golf course is and the pavilion is, that'd be a really nice asset for those folks up there in Wildflower and a whole bunch of other places. On the, on the grants, I thought the, on the crossing for Jones, John Liner, I thought we already had that. That was already underway.
We do. So, I remember I can talk about these things forever because I'm that involved in them.
Because that's really tight there.
It is. So, we have, that project is primarily funded by TIB funding. So, I was able to acquire about $2.2 million from TIB last summer. And then we just got $500,000 of additional funding to make the match from the economic development, Skagit Economic Development Funding Cycle. We got another $500,000 to meet the rest of our match on the roundabout because those actually came in high, below engineers' estimate, but we've had some substantial price increases in construction lately. And so, that's going to feed up basically half a million dollars of REIT funding that was slated to meet that match. And this like happened today. So, and then we, I then also another $750 of, so, the Economic Development Funding had a new rule passed by Department of Commerce that allowed certain fundings for basically a public-private partnership with development. And so, the Beatty Square Development got $750,000 to infuse that to help with that funding. So, today, we scored about, you know, a million, 1.7 million for the city through the Skagit Economic Development Fund. So, that was really great news.
That's all great news. If you had a wish list, looking at stuff, where it looks like everything that we have going on is funded, already moving forward, engineered from dirt to actually having a finished project.
That's the goal, sir.
Okay?
Yep.
So, you're feeling good about things right now, right on, okay?
Yeah, no, my team has been pretty successful this year. About seven and a half million dollars within the last year that we've been able to acquire for the city for various projects.
Good job, man.
So, yeah. It's, and hopefully, on July 1st, I'll get news that we get another half million dollars for a treatment plant upgrade that we're currently designing. So, I will bring that to 1.2 million and get us almost a full design for that treatment plant upgrade. So, yeah, it's pretty cool. So, any more questions on this topic? And then I'll do a real brief thing on the six-year TIP. Because that does relate to how these projects are prioritized, which is also an important piece of the comprehensive plan. But this was just the planned, comprehensive plan, second read element for this group.
Okay. Can we move on? Yep, go ahead.
I have a question on the material in the packet.
Sure.
Is this appropriate time to ask?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Page, page 32. And this may probably come in knowledge, but I don't know the answer myself. BNSF Railroad, Railroad Right-of-Way. I don't know what that is. Is that the Cascade Trail?
So, T4 dot 7?
Page 32.
332?
Policy number T4 dot 7.
Preserve the BNSF Railroad Right-of-Way.
I don't know what that, BNSF Right-of-Way is.
Oh, BNSF is Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Santa Fe Railroad. Got it. Okay, so, the railroad is a quasi-federal government agency, if you will. And they were granted rights of way even back in territorial days to allow them to build railroads for commerce. And so, you know, they also own right-of-ways. Sometimes right-of-ways are superior to the city's right-of-way. And sometimes the city has superior easements over and across railroad right-of-way at railroad crossings. And so, part of the preserve BNSF right-of-way is when, there are certainly times where BNSF removes railroad tracks from their right-of-way. But that right-of-way typically remains with BNSF unused. And like, for instance, the trail that goes out to Lyman is on old BNSF right-of-way. And that was turned back to the local jurisdictions, mainly the county, so they could build a trail on it. And so, preserving those right-of-ways rather than, there are times where BNSF right-of-ways get platted and turned into development. And that statement's basically saying, preserve those right-of-ways for local transportation uses rather than allow them to go to development.
So, Matt, here's an example. So, from Jameson where the high school is, that's all BNSF right-of-way. There's still tracks down there. Boy, and I've had this discussion with the mayor. That would be great to pull those tracks up and extend that trail all the way down to Ferry because that's where all that open space is. That's all BNSF right-of-way when it was all industrial over on the Jameson side on that end. So, boy, it would be nice to have that all converted to trail. Yeah. I'm a fan of rails to trails.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think that moment's been passed.
We're just talking about the BNSF right-of-way.
Yes, which I may own.
Okay, well, bring that up at the next general section.
We would love to hear it on the next meeting.
Yeah, totally, yeah, absolutely.
Another, another comment at page 70. This is general, some of the things that create your four, four errors. So, I might recommend when you give a URL, you verify that the URL actually goes to source. I checked one of them on page 70. Wind up for. Okay, here we go here. Are you curious on? The, all right. Page 70. The, yeah, the bike forum, that URL did not work.
Which, which page?
Page 70.
70?
At the top. Protection Bike Forum.
The combined packet.
Page 70 of the combined packet, the link at the top of that page does not work.
Although this thing does not work.
Oh, it doesn't work. Got it. We'll check it out and make it work.
Okay. Here. Thanks.
I had a quick question on the T5.5. Encourage the return of the Cedar Woolley to Concrete Rail Corridor to active rail use to promote revitalization of the city and East Skagit County. So, am I right to assume that we're talking like putting railroad tracks back on there and having like a pedestrian trolley or like active railroad? It's on page 32 of 99 in the combined packet. It's T5.5.
I would say that's probably a general long-range planning desire. It's not, it's nothing I'm familiar with, but I could look into it for some more clarity.
Yeah.
But.
I was just curious if that was the Cascade Trail that runs all the way out to Lyman or like, where that corridor exists.
Probably that last page there.
Yeah, he's got it up there. Yeah, I'm just curious like what the use case for it would be. You know, if we're not like actively.
Policy T4 dot 7 says including rail trolley.
Policy T5.5, so encourage the return of the Cedar Woolley to Concrete Rail Corridor.
Right, active rail use. Yeah. Really, I think that's possibly a general long-range statement. I mean, if there were, for instance, some sort of trip generator, the required rail freight in Hamilton or wherever that would be, that you can take these rail corridors because they are a solid rail bed and you could, you know, whether they've been converted to a trail or not and reestablish a rail route. And having something like that in the plan as a future policy, potential policy, partly supports something like that, that if there was an actual freight need at a, call it a rail level of required, rail carries far more freight, certain types of freight than truck traffic does. And so, if there was an advantage to that, having something like that in there, I could see where that would benefit, being able to support reconversion back to a rail system and an active train route.
Yeah.
But does that relate to a specific plan the city has in 10 years to do something? No, it does not.
Yeah, because I just, we have the, you know, the, I guess it's not the light rail. We have the Amtrak, you know, going from Mount Vernon.
Or it could be a light rail need, too.
Yeah, two stops. It's just like for commuters, it's not like a convenient schedule. So, I was just wondering if the plan was maybe to bring pedestrian train traffic into Woolley.
I could say, to my knowledge, there's no immediate plans or even medium-range plans to do that. But certainly, something like that doesn't preclude the possibility for something in the future to happen, whether it be freight or light rail, passenger car traffic, whatever. A lot of that usually depends on trip generation and trip attractor need. Yes, you're trying to have to connect a population with a destination. If it, I'm suspecting it doesn't really exist to the level of requiring rail at this time, but if it ever did, that's what would happen.
Yeah.
So, I believe that's what it's doing. Tom, comment if you want.
Good way to lower carbon emissions for people on electric trains.
I might have missed this a little bit then, but I also wondered about that one and how that almost seems to, if that is talking about the current trail, that's, you know, it seems to contradict right up above in 4.7 where you're saying, you know, encourage it the one way and then, unless, I mean, I guess I don't pay attention when I drive up that way. There must be rail already going up to concrete.
I.
And it's just not.
Didn't tell you whether it was or not, but.
Yeah.
But there are, I have seen policies like that before.
Interesting.
And you, it's not uncommon to have a policy similar to that. It, we have policies like that in Mason County's transportation plan because there's lots of old logging trains from back in the day. And if one of those has an advantage to re-establishing in a, I'll call it decommissioned rail line, back into a commissioned rail line. Sure. But there usually isn't a lot of plans to do that unless you're going to drop something like the City of DePont in the middle of somewhere. If anybody of you is familiar with the City of DePont. You know, it was supposed to have an Intel chip factory and just be this instant city. And those happen from time to time. It depends on who comes to town, so to speak.
There's no rails on the Cascade Trail from Metcalf straight up to Carnegie.
Yeah.
Is it rail bank?
Excuse me?
Is it rail bank?
Rail bank.
Rail banking means that the railroad still has the right to come in with tracks on it.
We're not talking about that tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that's been established.
But there's no tracks, but.
You're putting tracks on it.
Thank you, Phil. This is not public comment, sir.
So, so the idea is that, and this is probably a carryover from our prior comprehensive plans as well. And, you know, it's not an uncommon goal and policy that I've identified. So, if the opportunity comes up or the need arises for some reason, then you can move forward with creating that opportunity.
So, it's basically keeping the options over both ways.
Yeah, right.
Open, okay. I just wondered because I was like, what?
But typically, if it happens, something has, new has come in to create that trip generation need, be it a rail trip generation or a freight trip generation. And right now in this area, you know, we don't have Boeing coming to town either. You know, who knows what it would be? You know, maybe they find a rare earth metal mine close by and they want to start mining it and shipping it out in rail container. Who knows? But, I mean, those are. But the, I mean, those are, are, are big hypotheticals, but, um, but sometimes those things do happen in different communities and stuff. Hopefully they happen in Montana, but you know, it's, it's, it's what it is.
Thank you. Interesting. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for the follow up.
So real quick, hey, um, Thomas, can you pull up my TIP? Slide. I'll just run through this real quick. I'll describe a little bit about the colored TIP in front of you a little bit, but I want to show you what some of the project pages look like. File being this PC. Yep. Go down about seven slides. Eight slides, nine slides. Okay, keep going. Okay, that's good. So this is what kind of the project page slides look like. There's a typical picture of the project. This one's Sap Road, which we're going to close after we get John Liner under. Go one more slide. This is better. There you go. Oh, now go do another. Okay, well, this is our Cascade Trail Phase Two A that's currently under design, going into construction next spring. This extends that bike ped path from, um, Hodgkin Road to Hole Camp. And then Phase Two B on the tip as well will go from Hole Camp to the hospital. So ten foot wide bike ped path on the north side of Highway twenty gives you a picture at the beginning of the trail of what it will basically look like. Then you got a vicinity map on the bottom and then again, uh, the project number, the title, uh, with, um, uh, basically the limits of the project, uh, short timeline, overall cost, and then just a, a few, uh, highlight points of the basis for the project. And so I got one of these for every single project on your spreadsheet.
I need to make a comment on this.
Sure.
It's more of a public safety thing. We've had people die on Highway twenty because there's no place to walk from Hodgins all the way down to the hospital.
Right.
I mean, I'm looking, if you just walk on twenty, there is crosses all over the place.
Talk about F and S grade road.
John Coleman mentioned this about four years ago, so I'm really glad to see that that's finally.
Yep.
Happening. A lot of people just walking in the road still.
I got moms walking their kids in strollers on F and S grade all the way down to the roundabout too, and now all they have is a two foot shoulder. So that's what these projects are urbanizing these areas of roads so that we have safe patches. A lot of these really aren't just road projects. They're really about multimodal pedestrian safety and bicycle safety as much as the road itself. Cause the road's already there for the most part, but it's improving, uh, the lifespan of the actual road, but then it's adding those pedestrian elements, including this one. You're very correct. But this is the type of thing that will be on our website for each project. So people can get a good idea of exactly what they're looking at. And it kind of gives them that, uh, synopsis of when we think things are going to happen and how much they're going to cost and how we're going to fund them. And then real quick, looking at your just six year tip itself that's color coded, I'll go with that real quick and I'll be about five minutes and that's it. So the yellow section is a new section on the six year tip that cover what I like to call citywide projects. So our annual paving program, which is about a million dollars, mostly TIB funded annually is the, is the very first project, okay, on the tip. And then I've got a multimodal gap in rehab program, which is basically sidewalk gap program because we have a few of those as well. And then, uh, the safety and ADA enhancements are mainly handicap ramps, but could also be different safety elements like, uh, the pedestrian push button switches and that type of thing. And then minor, um, citywide construction is kind of a catchall to fix spot improvements, mostly small works roster stuff. And then the citywide, uh, stormwater retrofits, transportation related, we got a bunch of rotten culverts and then as we discover them, this gives us a pot of money to fix them as we go. Then the rest of it is this six year tip. The two green sections, the light green is the stuff planned to go to construction next year. Okay? The roundabout's not in here because it's going to be done by the end of this year, so it won't be showing up. The dark green is the, um, design and right of way going in twenty twenty-six or continuing into twenty twenty-six with the construction slated for the following year after that. The blue is like I said, that's what's on deck. Okay? And that can change a little bit too. But this in twenty twenty-six is what I'll be going after grant funding for, so I can start designing twenty twenty-seven. And then the orange is kind of the next project that could go on deck, but it's, it's just a little bit higher priority that will likely be the ones to move up first. And then the gray is really our planning level projects. Uh, these things, uh, don't necessarily move up in order. Even the orange doesn't necessarily move up in order. Blue and above typically should because that's what we're really planning on. And then all the way at the back end of the tip, you'll see in two thousand, uh, two thousand thirty-one, you'll see that I have design right of way and construction in the same year. That's that way because I want to record what I think it's going to be, but these projects are probably beyond the. And then if you notice, as you look at this spreadsheet overall, it basically has a diagonal trend to it because that's kind of shows how you want to move projects forwards as you go. But again, um, really anything below the, um, the blue or even the dark green is really at a more of a planning level than an active level. Because it hasn't really been, hasn't identified a funding source on it yet. That kind of explained how to read a tip a little bit. The adopted tip won't have all this color on it, but this helps me explain kind of how to kind of look at it. Uh, as a regional global plan that integrates in with our comprehensive plan directly. And that's all I've got. Any other questions?
On the, I was here for the city council meeting on Tuesday just as a attendee and I saw this and I was super excited. Just curious when you're, um, some of the improvements for rehab, you, you had mentioned sidewalks. I was just curious if there's any additional grant funding out there that we could apply for that is specific to sidewalks around school areas.
Not necessarily around school. Yeah, there is sort of, okay? There is the safe, safe route to schools program. And a lot of what they really fund are things like flashing beacons and that type of thing. Because if you think about how many school districts there are in Washington, they, they need to spread the peanut butter as best they can and sidewalks cost a lot. Actually, it's almost more cost to build a sidewalk curb and gutter per linio foot than the lane next to it.
Really?
Yeah, really. Yeah, they, they kill me. But that, that's just the cost of doing business for those. So, um, so the citywide local road, street improvements, that's why it's called that. It's not, it's called a paving program. Because what we do is we improve sidewalk gaps typically and ADA improvements and upgrades with all the asphalt we pave because we're required to. So there is a portion of, so remember last year when we did forty-seven ADA ramps? Some of those were specific ADA that would fall under, um, probably my line item three. Others were ADA ramps and sidewalk improvements associated with the paving. We had schedules A through G. We were doing so many different little things because we had this opportunity for funding through TIB through a couple of special programs, complete street program, is on Mosaic, about four funding sources to get all that done. And so that, these yellow projects, depending on the year, depending on if we want to save up to do something, or we may not have a need for ADA program stuff or multimodal stuff. But we can take those and combine them into the street program with, you know, another hundred thousand dollars of money and get a different thing done. So some of these can be shifted around if we're not using them and use that funding in another one of these categories to get a different benefit out of it.
Yeah, we've, a lot of the sidewalks around the schools are in super bad shape. I live on township in Jameson and so, you know, we, our corner, you know, got, you know, two of those brand new, you know, ADA compliant. Which is great, you know, for kids on bikes, but you know, you've got this great, you know, curb to, to roll up on and then the kids just go right on the roads. Because they can't ride their bikes on the sidewalks because there's tree roots and giant, you know, like three or four inch dips in them. And then you have cars that are parked right up to the curb. So you literally have kids like riding in the middle of the streets to avoid the cars because they can't ride on the sidewalks. So it would just, it would be nice to focus like sidewalk improvement around the schools for those kids that can't ride the bus that, that are walking to.
And kind of like I described to council when they asked me basically the same question last week or that we.
About Talcot?
Yeah, about Talcot. Um, yes, I, I, um, some of my other experience from other cities where we've had similar problems and stuff and bringing some of those strategies to this town. And my team's going to take a look at those things, uh, and evaluate them. One of the things we did earlier this year, um, we have, uh, I work is our main infrastructure program tracking software. And, uh, they drove all of our roads for us last year as part of data collection. And so we actually have picked all that type of stuff and identified it on video. And so part of the next thing is to evaluate those things. We will have to, we can't fix it all at once, but we certainly will come up with a similar prioritization with this tip to figure out how to chip away at those, both with local forces and by contract as I need to do it.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm, I'm well aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, the urban grows up, F and S grade, you know, that sounds beautiful. I'm all for it, you know, but like those kids are busing to school. Whereas the kids that are like in kind of that historic.
No, we have a maintenance component of how to make some of these improvements as well. It's not just, it's just not part of the six year tip. Although some of the elements on this is one of the ways we can fund some of those. But then there's some other options as well that we need as strategy. We need to be very strategic about it to figure out what we do first and what, um, becomes an ongoing maintenance program. To replace some of those facilities, especially pedestrian facilities that are just well beyond their life cycle, which. And, and you can almost pick a town in Washington. Every town has things like this. But, um, it's just because we haven't replaced all that good work done in the forties and fifties when people came back from World War Two and just built infrastructure everywhere. So. Yes, noted. Uh, we are working on it.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Technically, aren't adjacent property owners responsible for the sidewalk in front of their?
That's true. However, the property owners are best at sweat equity contributions to city maintenance. They're usually not very good at or, uh, uh, capital improvements and that's where we shine. So. It, it is a shared thing, but I know if I had to replace a sidewalk in my, in front of my house to the tune of ten thousand dollars, I'd have a hard time coming up with it. So.
Yeah, I'm happy to mow that grass. I'm not replacing the concrete.
Right. And so typically in city codes, you know, adjacent properties are certainly responsible for clearing debris, mowing grass, clearing snow on your sidewalk in front of each house, that type of thing. Because that's kind of the joint maintenance responsibility that citizens have. But, um, uh, capital investments, unless you're creating new property, new developments are, are very difficult to do because you just don't have the resources.
And, and we don't really have a sidewalk replacement program for the existing, you know, to like help property owners out.
It is, it's not like the six year TIP is. And also, uh, remember the, the federal functional classification slide from last time? That's also the roads that we can get state and federal funding for. Local access, you have to use your local funds. So one of the things I also was telling council, one of the decisions we want, we may need to make to make improvements to some of our concrete, old concrete road system. Is to maybe forego your paving program for two or three years to build up enough of those local monies eligible for those streets and then make, uh, strategic improvements that way. But we don't get to multiply our funds by four or five, six times by doing that because they're local streets unless they start changing state law.
Thank you.
If that's it, I'm done. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes unfinished business at eight twelve, I believe, unless there's something else. Uh, new business, eight twelve, comprehensive plan, economic development element.
Okay, this is, um, the first, the first time you're seeing this and, um, I'm turning this over to Donna, uh, who's been working on this part, updating the existing document.
Great. Um, thank you, Tom. Um, Thomas, can you bring up the PowerPoint? It's the one with the, yeah, that one. Okay, next slide. And I know many of you were, um, part of the update in twenty sixteen, uh, but, um, what we, what you have before you is just a very preliminary early draft, open to a lot of edits. And so that's what we'll be just covering that today and then happy to answer any of your questions. Next. Next slide. So this element, and you're probably aware of this, it's a mandatory element, uh, for fully planning cities and counties. It's listed, um, as one of the fifteen goals of the GMA to encourage economic development throughout the state. And so all plans have to have, uh, an element. Next. So you probably noticed there were a lot of proposed changes and edits to the draft document. One of the, in, in the memo that you got, um, we highlighted some of the key changes or recommendations. And, um, I'll just quickly go through those. And one of them is to, you recall the last document, the last plan had a pretty substantial vision statement. And that was broken down into subcategories. So we're taking the economic developments of vision statement. We're going to add it to this chapter. We introduced a concept of the transitional mixed commercial overlay area as a permanent, um, zone. And added new policies for promoting the city's downtown, including place making and developing an activation plan as well as others. Next slide. We also, um, added the list of priorities from the twenty twenty-four EDEP, uh, Economic Development Action Plan, which were, uh, we inserted into page two hundred and fifty-three. And added policies bolstering the industrial light manufacturing and commercial development in areas that are already designated for that use. And this is what we're focusing on light manufacturing and new language noting, uh, um, new development regulations are being written underway. To better manage battery storage sites. Next. So we've been hearing from the beginning, the need for more jobs in Cedar Woolley that are living wage jobs. And so we're trying to bolster some of the policies in that, not only downtown, but throughout the city. And so you may have noticed we put those in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just had some feedback. Uh, we also added transportation and multimodal policies. You notice those throughout the document. And, um, bolstered policies of providing, like I was saying before, economic diversification and broader range of higher income opportunities within the city. And bolster policies on the Swift Center, adding, um, policy, um, promoting decarbonization, decarbonization and innovative use of technologies for compliance with the climate element. And I think there's one more slide. Yeah, just this is the last one. Added a new goal and policies focusing on downtown improvements. Again, there's a lot more language on downtown, but also bolstering, um, economic activity throughout the city. Added initiatives and actions to promote Cedar's Woolly's image as a gateway to the Cascades and new goals and policies on enhancing the city's business friendly environment. So we're very open to any of your feedback. Um, we're still updating portions of it, especially the background information. And, um, would appreciate any suggestions or questions that you might have.
Just a quick edit. It's gateway to the North Cascades. Cascades go from British Columbia, pretty much.
Oh, that's, thank you. Yes.
Cascades are very, very specific as far as the region of the Cascades.
Right, yes. My favorite part of the Cascades, by the way. So I mean, uh, also feel free after tonight, if, if you haven't had a chance to go through all the changes, um, to send Tom or Nicole any questions or comments you might have and they'll forward them on to me. We'll continue refining this section. Hopefully the next time you'll see it, it'll be in the new format.
I have a question, Donna.
Sure.
On page eighty-eight. It says Cedar Woolley, major industrial employers. I just noticed that list is about ten years old at least or fifteen.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, page eighty-eight or?
Page.
Oh, it's a combined document, yeah.
Combined document, page eighty-eight or two fifty-two. Oh, it's up on the screen.
Yeah, that was one thing I need some feedback on and I haven't had a chance to sit down. We, we did, yeah, if you have, um, if you can help me under, update this list, that would be really helpful.
Fathom Yachts went out of business about ten or twelve years ago, but they, they were here. But now I believe TJ got that spot and he builds, uh, full-time fab. So that would be aluminum boat instead of fiberglass. And then in the industrial park, there's Velocity and Work Skiff. So you could take one yacht one out and three workboat ones in, but still they only.
Okay.
They probably, I don't know what they employ, usually around six people, but.
Okay. Okay.
Geoneke Bioenergy, I believe, is Sedron Technologies. And it's just not alternative energy, they're into a waste management, uh, treatment systems for all kinds of stuff. They're actually using some of their stuff right here in town, as well as, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think your mic might be off.
So, I'm sorry, but I'm pretty loud anyway. So Sedron Technologies is Geoneke Bioenergy. And I think they have a website that goes through a lot of the stuff that they have, and, and they're growing. I mean, they're right next to my building, and, uh, they seem to be very, very, uh, uh, busy. Yeah, they're, they're hiring, they, they, they took over the whole building, and, uh, I think they got some pretty amazing stuff that they're working on.
Yeah, okay.
And I think there's a tiny home manufacturer or something. Is that still there, Nicole, do you know, in the industrial park? They used to build kit something or others and pile them...
I think they are. I'm not sure if it's sheds or tiny homes, though.
I think they do both. They had the one tiny home.
Or both, maybe.
Well, I don't know the name of it, but there's that industry too, but...
Yeah, when I drove by there, it looked like they still had them there. Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you. If you see anything else, please feel free to just make a note of it and send it to Tom. Thank you.
So this will go to council at an upcoming meeting, uh, for their review and input, just like you had here. And then what we're going to do after, um, I didn't bring my schedule. I think it's after the July tenth, uh, Planning Commission, or City Council meeting, will start putting the final draft of the document together and bring that back to you. Our, our plan is to, um, not continue to look at each chapter one by one at this point. I know you've seen some of these once, some of these twice, but, um, I think with our schedule, uh, that we need to take what we've gotten so far, put it in the final draft, and then bring it back. And if it takes a couple times to review that, that's fine. Um, we have to show the state we're making good progress, and it'd be nice to have a draft, uh, done by June thirtieth, which is our grant deadline. It doesn't have to be adopted by June thirtieth. And then we can take July, uh, to continue tweaking. We'll have a couple more chapters that won't be done until then and so forth.
So do you want to do additional meetings in July?
No, but since you brought that...
I think we should maybe do two to...
Well, I'd like to bring up, I would like to have another meeting on the twenty-fourth of June. That was a week from today.
Okay. I'm fine with that myself.
Okay. If you all are okay, one week from today? You do, I thought you might, okay. But if everyone else, and I'll, I'll follow up with Jessica, she had a thing to go to tonight, too.
Yeah, she's on vacation. She's in Florida.
That's right, that's right. That is a thing.
She gets back, I think, on the twenty-eighth, though.
Oh, okay, she might miss that one then, too.
She would miss that one as well, yep.
I haven't heard from Pat, but we'll follow.
She could go in via, I've been to Maui, I've got into...
She's going to be on a cruise in the Bahamas, so, I don't know if she'll have Wi-Fi. I think that was kind of the point, was to unplug, get off the grid.
Okay, we'll, we'll take the helicopter and we'll find her.
Right, yeah. You're, you're thinking six-thirty?
Yes, six-thirty on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, now, will, there'll be an online option for that?
Yes, it will. And then we'll, of course, get the packets out to you the Friday before. And so, Joe, to answer your question, so I know that we have that one extra meeting, and then in July, I want to start rolling with, um, City Council's review of the drafts and then, and yours. We might just have a one regular meeting in July.
And that's the fifteenth, I think?
Yeah. So that's what I'm hoping for at this point. I know we've asked you to be at a lot of different meetings this past couple months.
Any plan to have another, um, joint meeting with Planning Commission and, and...
And council?
And City Council? I, I thought it was really interesting on the meeting on Tuesday, you know, we went round and round and round about the parking and some of the ideas that, you know, that we had put into the plan, you know, we thought they were great ideas, and then just kind of sitting out there and then listening to the City Council review it, like, oh, you know, this doesn't make sense, and listening to, like, some of the builders that came in that talked about it too. And so I, I just feel like there, there's definitely a, like, there could be some efficiencies in us having just kind of that joint session, so that we're not making recommendations to things that they're just going to edit out. If we could kind of all be collaborative and on the same page, it would help kind of both Planning and City Council.
That's a good idea. We hadn't planned one until September, um, but that's just a standing meeting. It's not really focused on any one particular thing. So what I'll do is I'll talk with Mayor and with Charlie to see if perhaps, when we get a draft done, maybe the first review of a draft could be a joint meeting. I hadn't thought of that till you just mentioned that, but that might be a good idea.
Yeah, like, even just, like, something like we had did when we were talking about the vision statement. It's just kind of a workshop, so that it's off the record and just kind of free conversation, or not, I guess not off the record, but just more, more informal.
Yes.
Yeah, on the record, but informal.
Okay. I'll run that up the flagpole and see.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, questions and questions are over now for this?
If there are no questions right now, and, and like Donna said, if you, when you go through this in more detail, have questions for us, or on any of the other stuff, please let us know.
Okay.
And we'll be sure to get that into, uh, our, our, our work, work stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if there's nothing further on that, it's eight twenty-five, that one's over, final thing. Uh, I'll just skip over.
Yeah, we need that last topic.
We did get a resignation letter from Commissioner Freiberger. We're sad to say, you've been a huge help to this commission, and you taught us all a lot. And we don't want you to go. But you have the floor if you want to say anything.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, it's, it's been an utter pleasure, uh, being on the Planning Commission. Um, hard to believe it's actually been six years, um, parts of two separate terms, but, um, yeah. And I have learned more, I'm sure, than I ever informed anybody else, so. Um, yeah, it's, it's been a great experience. It's always, um, fascinating to see how every city, um, has its own unique, um, goals and, and, um, strategies for, you know, what its vision is and, and, uh, it's, uh, yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm going to miss it, and I'm going to miss all of you, so it's, it's been great working with everyone.
These are tough shoes to fill.
So, let me get this on the, on the record. Nicole brought something to this that, uh, for me, it was just really great to see. Somebody that is so involved in just planning in general, just from family level down to her career, that has just added so much to this commission, you are going to be missed. Got a tear by her right now. Anyway.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, and good luck to you in Eastern Washington.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be on a commission over there somewhere, won't you?
If they're lucky.
Yeah, their luck.
If they're lucky.
Their game. So if, uh, if there's anything else, any more questions or comments, it's eight twenty-seven. We can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
All second?
Commissioner Fatizzi first, Commissioner Sexton second, and all those in favor of getting out of here, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's over at eight twenty-eight. Thank you, everyone.